We call this meeting as administrative orders. For the agents to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, liberty, justice, and
Good afternoon, everybody. We will begin with the minutes of the July 1st meeting. You all had a chance to review those. We have a motion by Dale second to Tracy to approve the minutes of the July 1st meeting. All in favor, say aye. Three ayes, Jane. First up on today's agenda is our IT Director, Michael Kane. Michael, what do you mean?
That's different. We got two things. First, I got a laptop quote for EMA. The best price was from Amazon, $948.41. Actually, I had it on sale during prime days, but that was for two days. There's no way I could get that. Price and get it quoted and all that kind of thing in that two days. But the closest other price that I got was from another vendor. It was basically a thousand dollars or a hundred dollars more. Or a thousand dollars and fifty-six, ninety-five. So Wade says he has the money for it. So, so $948.41. Wade can get that order and get that in for his office. He has to prove it.
Okay, did you see Wade who was paying for this one?
Yeah, he said he had a grant.
So IDHS, I had leftover funds after buying the office or the classroom equipment, the tables and chairs. IDHS approved a grant adjustment to use that funding. I think it's $611.61 to go towards a laptop computer. Outside of that, I have a little bit of money, I think, that remaining cost of it in my repair of equipment line item in my budget. And I'd like to use that $300 to go along with the $611 from the state grant to buy the computer.
Do I take approval from council?
If the council won't let him transfer, I've got it. I've got it on my computer phone, so.
Okay, so we're covered then?
Yep, it's covered.
Do we still need the approval of council for it being covered? Or is it something?
I think they're going to request it from council. If council declines, then.
I see. So I'm going to have to approve the computer laptop for.
We have a motion by Tracy second to Dale to approve the $948.41 for laptop for EMA. All in favor, say aye.
Okay, I also had a $144 for the interview I did prior before last for my part-time position for Billy Mays. Just wanted to get approval. We had him hired. You know, I've been a part-time person for almost seven and a half months now. But I like to be able to take a day off occasionally when, you know, actually use my vacation. So, but for that, I need to have somebody here that can cover things. So, but seemed like a good kid. He took computer classes at the, what do you call it? Whitewater Care Center, whatever it was called. Seemed to be willing to learn and seemed to have the right answers when I asked him some basic troubleshooting questions. So I wanted to give him a chance and see how he does. Really, it's one of those things until you throw him in the fire, you don't really know how well it would do, but.
He'll be on the probationary time anyway. He'll be able to evaluate. Do you guys have the one, the form, or is that what Dale has? I haven't seen it.
Is that this $144?
This is the one I printed off. I did.
Yeah, I printed off. I have one too, so if you need one. I need to send the, copy the application, but I have it here. You can see it.
Motion to approve the part-time IT Billy Mays?
Here we have a motion by Tracy second to Dale to approve the $144 request for IT Department to hire Billy Mays as a part-time IT employee. Any further question? All in favor, say aye. Three ayes, Jane.
And I still need to go to the council on the first meeting to get that approved correctly.
I would say no.
Oh, so you go ahead.
Replacing an existing position.
Okay, so you go ahead and get a hat and start. Okay, I'll give them a call. Anything else for me?
Thanks, Michael. EMA Director Wade Vaughn. Wade, you've got some grant applications pending?
Yeah. Good afternoon. I'd like approval to apply for two grants. One will be a Rumpke Community Giving Grant. And the other would be for a CSX Railroad Grant. And this would be for equipment for the EMA volunteers, like high-visibility jackets, helmets of lights. And they're called guardian angel lights. They basically go on your shoulder and they strobe red and white so people know that you're out in the middle of the road. They can see it from a distance. So I'd like approval to apply for both of those grants. There is no county cost or match for it as well.
We've approved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale second to Tracy to approve the grant applications for EMA Department. All in favor, say aye. Three ayes, Jane.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have questions still about your volunteers. Did we ever get that list and, you know, so that we can approve the volunteer list?
I haven't sent you a list yet, no. I didn't realize that you requested that.
Well, I think we did. It was a while back, you know, not that long ago.
Now, I know I've sent it. I believe I sent it to Jane and maybe it was to Haley I sent it to. Do you remember getting the list?
I have a list, but not the liability waivers.
Yeah, he did the liability.
Well, I think we were still in the process of figuring out if you guys were going to change the liability waivers to match the wording and the addendums that they had to sign to be on workman's comp. And to that point, you guys may want to look back to your August 2024 meeting on YouTube where we discussed that and adding them to workman's comp during that meeting. I want to say it was August 7th, maybe. But it's on YouTube, so if you have questions on what we discussed during the meeting, you might look at that.
I'm not recalling that conversation right this minute.
It's been a year.
So was there a conflict between the wording of the liability release forms and?
The addendum?
The addendum?
Yes. So that's why I wanted to make sure that that was cleared up before I had them sign anything.
Do you recall anything about that, Jeff?
I don't. Trying to look through my email, I don't.
Okay. Well, that's a matter we want to get cleared up.
Sure. I agree.
So let's put our heads together on this and come to a resolution on it soon.
Yeah, sounds good.
I'm willing.
Okay.
Anything else for me?
Should we maybe put them on hold until we get this resolved?
And that's up to you guys.
I mean, because.
It wouldn't hurt, but I don't want to hamstring you or I don't.
I don't either, but I don't want to create a major problem on either side.
To your point earlier, you guys approved this. You approved them being on the workman's comp in 2024. I've stood my team up since then and been working with them, training them, getting them ready. And they've been out on multiple different occasions helping, whether it's trees down or auto accidents or whatever. So I would hate to sideline those guys that are already out doing the work. They're volunteers. They're not costing us any money. The equipment I'm going after is through grants, so we're not funding their equipment through the county. I just really hate to sideline our volunteers when they're giving so much of their time in training as well as doing the job. So that's my two cents worth.
I'm sure we share that frustration with you, Wade. But you also understand our, how should I say it? Our uneasiness with the risk of this liability, for lack of better words. Because we still have some issues, or at least one that has not been totally resolved.
And I haven't heard anything lately, and I don't know where that is.
Me either.
I mean, we're talking, I think we can get an answer in two weeks. I mean, is that, is that an issue just to not call anybody for two weeks?
Well, dispatch is the one that usually calls them whenever we have a major issue.
Dispatch calls your volunteers?
Yeah. They're public safety officials, so, yeah.
What do you two want to do?
Well, I guess to be on the best side of things, I guess my opinion would be that we would wait and not have dispatch call the volunteers for two weeks until we've decided that this is, I know we've approved that, but I think it's more with some more recent things that we need to be certain of everyone that's volunteering also. So that's what, I guess Kelly's here. She's hearing us in this conversation also. So that's just my thought, is to be on the best side of, for YouTube, for protection, you know, and the legal sense of everything, that we're doing everything we should do. Do it with integrity.
Put them on hold for two weeks, but if we get it straightened out before that, then then put it back together. I mean, we might be able to do something in a day or two days instead of the two weeks.
So is somebody going to send me a copy of the waiver they'd like them to sign updated?
Yeah, we'll put something together and get it back to you.
And do we have the, we have a list of your, Haley does have a list of all the volunteers?
Okay, so in essence, Wade, what we're saying is.
I know what you're saying. I get it.
It's not going to use your volunteers until we get this waiver thing straightened out and hopefully number one in two weeks from today. Does everybody agree to that?
Very well.
Thanks. 911 Director Kelly Van Meter, do you have a 144 request?
I do. They're actually pretty much rehired. They both have already been in dispatch part-time, but they both went to full-time jobs. But they're able to come back now to do part-time. So it's Chander Harden and Ellie Ford. They also still have certifications that are valid, so we don't have to re-certify them right now, but the certifications are free anyway. So if we did, we did, but they're still valid dispatchers. People that we don't have to train, so to speak. They can get right in the seat, which is what we need. We're in desperate need of help.
These are part-timers already with the experience?
Yes.
I'm going to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Dale second to Tracy to approve the hire of Harden and Ford central dispatch part-time positions. All in favor, say aye. Three ayes. Anything else?
Not this time? Anything for me right now?
No.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
Okay.
I'm sorry, was that Dale motion and Tracy second?
Health Department Matt Schur, do you have anything for us yet today?
I do not. I'm just here to answer any questions that might pop up.
Okay. Highway Department Chris, do you have anything to report today?
Good afternoon. I'd like to seek the approval of the 144 for mechanic and heavy equipment operator. We had discussed the option of three guys, but we got to get something going here to. Mechanic we got now is 65 in January. He's going to be leaving for short. Several guys, I don't know how far you want to get into it, but need to get a couple back here. I guess as fair as we can be about it, I reckon for now.
You've not actually done a 144 yet, have you?
Angie's told me we did. It's been a while. This is kind of drug out for a while. I double-checked before I left and came here. And that's just what I was hoping it was done, so.
I haven't seen anything, Chris.
Okay, okay.
Have you got a candidate for the mechanic's position?
Yes. I have had people in there. I have talked to them. I've been lucky most of the time to have been there when somebody came, put an application in. So we went right in the office and talked to them. I have not led anybody to anything until we get, I wanted to get this done here first, right? Make sure. I will say the mechanic isn't going to go the direction I thought it would, but I think it'll still be okay. So, you know, I think we had talked before about some stuff. That's not where we're going to get right now, but we'll get, we'll have another guy come do it, so. If you want to wait till the next meeting, that's fine. I was just, I asked before I came and I was told that it was done. It was actually done well because I thought we was going forward with this before now, and that doesn't happen, so hasn't happened, so.
But I mean, normally your 144 is going to have the name of the person you're requesting to hire. So if you didn't have a candidate in mind.
I do, but I didn't. Okay, that's fine.
You know what I'm saying? That's what they approved, is the person.
Well, and I asked that before I came here too, and I didn't realize we had. So we'll do that, we'll do that at the next meeting then, if that's all right.
Yeah.
And that's my fault for being new to this.
It's going to look like this, and it's going to be like what Michael and Kelly just did, where they said, this is who I want to hire and here's their qualification.
You know, this is my first.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying.
And that's why I relied on my secretary. I was like, hey, have we got this done right? And I thought we did, but apparently we've missed a loop somewhere here. So that's okay. We'll get there.
What else? Angie fix that up for you?
That's okay. We'll get there.
So I know, we told you to go ahead and look for mechanic and a heavy.
We talked about three, and I was only going to ask for two to get by, because two, if you look back through history, two puts us back where they have been, which is at 12 guys. With the mechanic and the sign guy and then the five of each, or of the mechanic and truck drivers. That's no more than, that's, if you look back through the thing, that's the low spot of where they've been, is at two. We are below that now.
Well, before we can approve anything, we have to know who we're approving.
Okay, that's fine. No problem. Yeah, it's all right. I was, I thought we had this right and.
I mean, if you have, if you have the name, we can type the form out later. I mean, if you want to.
Well.
But if you're not ready to do that.
I didn't call the guys until they were the ones, because I wanted to make sure we was right here. Because if that is, this has been a little wishy-washy all along, what we was going to do here, so I didn't. That's why I did not contact them and come up here with the name and then have to tell them, hey, we ain't going to do this. So that's okay. It's fine.
I actually heard this better than telling somebody to get it and then we have to.
Yeah, I didn't want to have to call the guy back. So, man, I tried. They told me nothing on that, so. You know, you would think that would be less embarrassing than staying here and having it happen that way, but, you know.
Mechanic and one other person? That's what I thought. Are we going to be okay with the car and the mechanic and one other equipment operator?
Yeah, because this is replacing, right?
Yeah, it's not, we're not adding to nothing.
And the mechanic that we're using right now is retired.
He's actually a heavy equipment operator. He's not, he only stepped in to fill in when the other mechanic left a month and a half ago, and, you know, Moore's left back in January or first February, so. And we'll end up with one mechanic instead of two, which you had previously had down there. So we're going to ask a lot out of that one guy, but I think we'll, you know, we'll figure it out, but, so. Yeah, it's my, I didn't want to, you know, they guys have all checked on their applications and I kept stalling because I didn't want to give hope that wasn't there, basically. And so that's not the way, we should have went the other way about it. That's okay.
I think I understand your apprehension.
Yeah, I was just being cautious. It's all love and time.
I think we leave here today with the understanding that we were giving you preliminary approval on one mechanic and one heavy equipment operator. Now you decide who those candidates are going to be. And when you turn in your 144 request with their names on it, then we can approve it.
Okay, okay. And I, that's my fault. I went with what the secretary told me, because she's been there several years and I thought we was okay. So that's what I was doing. But anyway, what else? Anything else?
Do we need to approve the 144 without a name? That way you can call them and say, hey, you're hired. And then when you come back next meeting, approve the person. Or just go like your.
I think we're okay. We're all three giving him the green light, right? Okay. Just don't change your mind two weeks from now.
You did this right, Chris. You guys could publicly say, you got it. You got it too. So we have been a little bit, like you said.
Yeah, and I understand everybody's being cautious. There's a lot of things going on. Nobody understands really what's happening with money, and so I got that, but, you know.
So you're going to have to bring a 144 to your August 5th, right?
That's what it is, whatever, yeah. What else? Anything else? Any questions? I'm sure there is.
Do you want any more road complaints?
I promise it probably seems like we're not working on them, but we are. We, we've actually, last week we was down Longwood Road. I don't know if anybody's been there. We almost had it in the paver, give us trouble, and it's back at the shop right now, so. It's mechanical, it's going to have failures. Probably lacked about four or five trucks of getting Longwood Road finished up on the west end out there about that S-curve. And it actually comes out pretty nice right now, but, so, you know, we have been busy. We got, they're out patching today with the, both the total patchers. So there's a lot going on. Sometimes it's hard to see, but we're trying, so.
Hang in there, Chris.
It's all right. Thank you.
For probation department, Mr. Siggers, do you have anything?
Nothing today, just here to observe.
Okay. Sheriff Jones, do you have anything today?
No, I don't.
Okay. Surveyor Bill Mackey, do you have anything? Mr. County Attorney, do you have anything for us?
Not yet, but I don't think it's last year here. I mean.
Anyone have any mail they need to share? Do you have any old business you want to take care, take up?
No, neither do I.
Okay. Do you have any, do you have any new business?
The request Joe Lisa sent us to let the public know about getting letters of an interest in the grant opportunity that we have coming up.
Yeah, that's the owner occupied.
Right.
Grant that is, that grant application period is open right now.
And that we need letters of people who would be like interested in this. Basically, if they need a replacement in like roof or air conditioning, there was all kinds of things that were on that. So you may be able to explain it better than me. This is my first time really paying attention to that.
Well, they call this the OOR grant, owner operated rehabilitation grant. The application cycle is open for this right now through our grant administrator. This has been done before here in the city, and I think this time it would be countywide, if I understand right. Awardees could get assistance for replacing roofs, air conditioners, water heaters, such as that sort of thing. And of course, there's a certain criteria that you have to meet. The household income has to be under a certain level, and that's determined by the number of people that actually live in the house. And a couple of other things, but Joe Lisa Bates, our grant administrator, needs letters of interest from any member of the general public that might be interested or not in participating in this application process in order to present at the public hearing that she even has to have to get the grant established here in Fayette County. So if you all know anyone is interested in this, contact one of us, or better yet, Joe Lisa Bates's office. Or, better yet, Jolisa Bates's office, who is our grant administrator, works over at City Hall, where her office is. So this would be a really good deal for a lot of people, if you could meet the, meet the income criteria that has to be met. So, doesn't hurt to try, and this is just a public reminder. This grant opportunity is, is here.
And I think it was until 15th, maybe, of August, I saw the dinner, maybe, was that, that we needed to have those letters, or she needed to submit everything with the letters, so.
I didn't copy that, so I'm not going to say for sure, because I can't remember the exact date. But it's relatively soon. Okay. Anything else, any new business? All right, we have here today, Ms. Charman Gabbard from the Connection Cafe. Charman, welcome to you.
It was the 15th. It was August 15th.
August 15th?
Yeah, said by noon. Thank you, Jane. I'm sorry, midnight.
I'm probably loud enough that you don't, I don't need the microphone. So, I'm here with my colleague Allison Green from Indiana University Public School Health and Research. I'm not here to ask you guys today for a renewal. I'm here to give you guys some informed data, and to ask you guys to make an informed decision with the data that we present. I first came before the commissioners in 2017. Paula Moppen offered me a job in harm reduction in the health department. So I think I was the first felon that you guys probably ever approved to work in the courthouse. And since then, I have been supported very well by this community and people. Now I stand here with no, no felony record. My record's been expunged, and I went on to be able to recognize how important that was and the work that I've been supported and got to do. We left, Paula and I left the health department with the syringe service program in 2018, because Fayette Regional opened the 42-bed detox facility. That was in operation for 11 months. So our program was closed for about six months with all the red tape between the legalities of you guys and the hospital. We were back open for about five months, and then the hospital filed bankruptcy and we closed. So in 2015, when the decision was made to open a syringe service program in Indiana, we were the second syringe service program in a state. It was because of the high infectious, infectious rate disease of Hep C. So at that time, I forget, we ranked like 80 something in the nation, I think, as, in all the counties, to be determined to have the next outbreak, like Scott County. So the SSP opened. Paula was absolutely amazing, she was like a driving force behind it. She realized we had 20 some deaths in 30 days back in, you know, when the news was here outside the jail and such. I was incarcerated at that time. When I was in prison, I realized that, like, we had faith-based programs, we had AA, but what about all of the rest of us that were outspoken and needed to do something different? Because we were just known as drug addicts, worthless, whatever, let them die, let them be incarcerated. Since then, when the program was shut down, Gary Neiler was still on here, and, and we had Navi on, one of the commissioners. I came before you guys because I was contracted to do a campaign and to ask you guys not to shut down the program, because it was harder to get a new program started than it was to keep one open. So since then, I've asked the county for zero dollars, not one, not one dollar, to operate our program. So I've never asked the health department here for nothing, I've never asked our county for nothing. We went on to train and certify over 50 people through community health workers, certified recovery specialists, recovery coaches. We've had two AmeriCore graduates, over eight interns through IV tech. We have had five full-time employees in Fayette County Jail, which we're down now, some numbers. The jail data, Zach's here, we just presented in Arizona and the work we get to do. Our program went with, from starting from SSP, that's it, to me serving in a parking lot because COVID happened and already kicked me out, because they shut down, not kicked me out, I shouldn't have used those words, but, to, I stayed in the parking lot until December to serve our people. Because this is not a job, this is, this is life or death. So some may see us as worthless, I see us as people that's never been gave a chance or supported well to do things different, so connection's so important. You guys have the data before you. Since 2019, we have steadily had a decrease in overdose deaths in our community. My team go out there every single day and fill Narcan boxes, they connect with people, they love and support people. There's a lot of doses of Narcan being gave out, but there's also 3,000 doses that's been reported back to us being used. That means there's a lot that's unreported as well. We, last year alone, we tested 133 people for HIV and/or Hep C in our building. On the State Department of Health's dashboard, our local health department tested, I think it's eight, that shows on the dashboard. So we are that first point of contact. And, and Dr. White, when we came for our renewal, because he is our county health officer, we've been a qualified entity since 2019. Again, we've never asked you guys for a dollar. We came, he supported me, he supported me up until October of last year, when the city council tried to pass an ordinance to have us removed from Central Avenue, because it said we were a public and economic health threat to downtown Connersville. So the ordinance was illegal, they never had the jurisdiction. Here we are back today. Dr. White told me in October that the county health board told him to distance himself from us. Up until then, Wayne White brought cookies, snacks, coffee, every single month, every single month, to the cafe. Dr. White is the official over our SSP dashboard, he has access to it. When I came called last month to get on the board, the agenda for today's meeting, then Missy Kavanaugh sent an email to the State Department of Health, asking who the qualified entity was. They said Charman and Moore through the Connection Cafe. So I returned the email, asked if we could meet. The response was, here's the letter from Dr. White, which you have in front of you. He said, I won't be declaring, this is exactly it, to whom it may concern, after August 13th, 25, I will not be renewing my declaration of an opioid emergency in Fayette County. Dr. White has the longest standing title of county health official in the state of Indiana. We were never given an SSP because of an opioid emergency, it was our infectious disease rate. So, one of the other things we've been doing for the last year, you can see the data, we've been having our syringes tested. Every single week, someone comes and picks up our syringes. So the data shows how much fentanyl, how much methamphetamine, and how many xylazine and cocaine that's in these syringes that's been tested, and there's lots of other ingredients. I just want to say today, thank you guys for giving me these last six years. Thank you for the support that you gave me. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity, and without our program, because as you see, there's a big difference in the services that's provided between the official that's over our program and us, that people will die. That we will lose people in our community, because we're the first point of contact for the people that we get to serve. Allison, you can, this is, you can go ahead and talk, because I'm a little bit of a mess.
Yeah, well, I'm happy, I'm happy to talk, and I'm happy also to answer questions that may come from the commissioners as well. But yes, so we partnered together, as Charman said, so we were really strategic in terms of working to get federal, state, and private funding to support our efforts. So as kind of Charman said, there was no cost to the community, both the county or the city. And so that's something that we really took a lot of pride in, that we were able to kind of support our program. As Charman said, the impact in terms not just of providing peer recovery support and naloxone for overdose prevention, and all of the different supports and referrals to help folks access their different needs, whether it's related to treatment, whether it's related to food, or housing, or work. The cafe has also provided an incredible opportunity for workforce development, not just here in, you know, with the Connection Cafe staff, but also, you know, Sheriff Jones can talk about kind of the impact that it's had on the, on workforce within the jail, and how the Connection Cafe has relieved some of the burden. I believe we're at the highest, we're over 150, right, something like that?
Yeah, recently.
Recently, you know, for the 114 beds, is that what you have?
Yeah.
For the 114 beds, and we've been able to help get that number down. We've also, for the first time, been able, for folks that are exiting the jail, been able, with the tremendously trained and certified staff, been able to provide supports to those folks, so that instead of just kind of being repeat back through the door, they're instead walked over to probation. So we've seen some of those, the sheriff's talked about those probation violations going down significantly. So there's been a really large impact on the jail as well. In addition to workforce development, one thing that I would kind of argue, part of our approach has really been to take a very comprehensive approach, and to really integrate recovery support with community connection, as well as with the harm reduction services. To understand that people are at different points, at different points in their lives, they're, they're engaged in different behaviors, and we want to be there to provide whatever support and meet them where they're at, for wherever they are, so that there's opportunity to help. That's really what the syringe service program and harm reduction is really about. It's about really meeting someone where they are, and trying to help them reduce whatever harm is occurring at that time. And so we've really kind of taken a public health approach to that, and we've been really proud of seeing our, the numbers decrease, seeing our testing go up. The one other thing I'll say about kind of the way in which we, we've been conservative, I would say, in terms of collecting data from those that we serve, because we want to keep it as low barrier as possible in terms of gaining service. But one thing that's been important to us is to solicit feedback in terms of both how we're doing, for satisfaction with our services. But also, when we go to roll out new services, it was a pretty big undertaking to, for us to begin doing HIV testing and hepatitis D testing. You have to go through a federal process of obtaining a CLIA waiver, et cetera. But the other thing that we did is we developed a survey, so we could talk to those that we serve about what would make them more likely to get tested, what barriers do they seek in getting tested, what barriers are there to accessing care. And we learned quite a bit, we learned that the, the high percent of the folks that know that they're HIV positive, know that they're, that they have Hep C, are not linked to care. So that's, that's a big issue for us. And so that's been definitely a big piece of what we're working to do, and what we continue to do. And without kind of having the syringe service program and getting to kind of interact with folks, we lose a lot of those opportunities to interact and make those connections, which can improve public health as well as individual lives.
Oh, and then I just want to add that, in the state of Indiana, it is not illegal to obtain syringes without a prescription. You can go right to Walmart and sign for them, you can go on Amazon, and they'll be delivered right to your door. You can go to Tractor Supply. The only thing this program did for us, one, like, I'll talk about financial costs in just a minute, was legally, it gave us the support under the Department of Health through the viral infectious program, and it gave us that opportunity to have the program. Next year's the sunset, lol. So for one more year, this program is able to be ran. Wayne County just shut down their program. Right now, we have 16 people, not my data, the State Department of Health data, living in Fayette County, that's not connected to services for HIV. Do you know what that 16 people can do and will do, if they don't get connected to services? We're not responsible for the follow-ups, unfortunately, because I would love to do them. But we aren't responsible for that, the, the health department, and that is their job, sadly. I mean, I would do it, I would love to do it. And another thing, we have an MOU with the city. My staff pick up the syringes, zero cost, once again, dispatch calls, they go out, they pick them up. Our syringe calls are not that tremendous, as, as like, one does sound like a lot, but anyone can obtain a syringe without a prescription. So it's not illegal to possess them, it's illegal to use it as a drug instrument. We are just a point of contact. People that come to a syringe service program, data supports, they're five times more likely to enter into a form of treatment. Most of the people that are against the program have never even walked into our program. I've not asked for support, because I tried to stay under the radar, because of this, because of the stigma. Again, we cost you no money, I asked nothing from the health department. Dr. White was just the person who approved it for Paula, but it was infectious disease, it was never an opioid emergency that the program was approved for. So my ask is that you take, take it all in, and look at the data. We're saving you guys money, we're not asking for one dollar. We're open to questions, or if Matt has something to say. Or whoever.
Start, we'll, we'll ask, does anyone from the health department or anywhere else have anything to add to this?
No, I, I don't have anything to add, except they did explain that, you know, Dr. White did not renew the public health emergency, public health emergency, from what I understand, is what's required to continue the needle exchange. We fully support anything that's going to improve public health. So if, if they can, the harm reduction program's great, so let's continue the harm reduction program. But at this time, we have not present, been presented with any data that would cause, cause Dr. White to reinstate the public health emergency. So, I'm not saying there's something that would not change that, but it's not been presented at this time. But no, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but that's all we have right now. I just learned about this meeting today, so if you have any questions, yeah, I'd be happy to answer them.
I guess, I guess I got a question for, God, Charman. The, you got on here, you get 10,000 doses of Narcan, naloxone provided, but you've only had 3,000 reported to be used. Who reports that back to you?
It's self-reported, that is self-reported. So, that's our, so we have, our, we have, we have street outreach workers, so to, to let you know this. We did receive opioid settlement match from the state and the county, but that was for our street outreach teams, it had nothing to do with the Fayette County Harm Reduction Program. And so, not syringes or anything like that, but the Narcan is all self-reported, so sometimes we don't get that back to us, because they might go into treatment, they may, they may go into another county, or, like, oftentimes we'll pull up, and the box will be empty. I know one night down at the bar, I got a message that said, thank you for what you do. There was three overdoses down at Jimmy's, or whatever it's called now. And they ran down and they got Narcan. I would like to also add this, sorry, to, that's just my brain in. We've never had one arrest, we've never had one break-in, we've never had one overdose down at the cafe. Not one, we've been on that corner since 20. Like, Tracy, you've been there, I mean, we have, it all moves, you know, it's not about being there. It's just about, like, let, let me and my team, every one of my staff are people in recovery. They get up every single day, they go to the jail, they're in there eight hours a day, they love the work they get to do. We've not asked that for nothing, like, give us an office space, let us have a desk, let us, you know, like, let us do this, let us do the work. And it's not just, it's not just the Connection Cafe, the House of Ruth, Mike Horni, Better Days Through Jesus Christ. And I know, like, the health department has grants that they're granting out. We didn't ask for it, we don't want, we're doing that work. We just want to be, let us do the work, let me find the money to pay my staff, let me work hard at that. Let us work to get their records expunged, and to give them a new, new chance of life. Like, I've, this is what we do, because we were, gave a second chance at life. But if we don't, tomorrow is Wednesday, I'm getting ready to hire one of our first people. She's, tomorrow, she's coming on staff. She was an SSP participant in the basement, her and her husband. And I got the message on my phone, but she starts work tomorrow, she's four years in recovery. And she said, I don't have any dress clothes, but my parents told me they were proud of me, and they're going to help me. Like, that's it, like, I'm exhausted, I'm tired of fighting, but I love the county, I love this community. But I don't want to fight anymore, I just want to do the work. I'll find the money to support us, just let me be. That's, that's it. We love the people that are not always loved, and, and they matter to us. These are my, some of my staff. These are my, some of my staff. And Allison, like, she's a driving force and without I, you, like, my staff are certified research assistants because we've gotten to go out and collect data. Jane's daughter did an internship for us. Like, just let us continue to do the work. I don't want money from you to run this program. Reed Health gave us $10,000 for our syringes. It's a public health issue. I don't need, I don't need your money, I'm going to find it. I just need your support.
And what, have you got anything else? Well, I know, maybe last fall, I don't know, when we deal with the city, there was people talking about the syringes. You were getting blamed for syringes all over the place and maybe they were yours, maybe they wasn't, I don't know. But is there any way to put something on those, your syringes, so they know they're yours? And maybe three-fourths of the syringes that get picked up, you can prove is not yours?
If I'm saying that right. So, I don't, I mean, there's, there's, if you look, we pay for the syringes. It's, it's about $15 for 100. And it's called Easy Touch, like, they're expensive, so 100 syringes. I mean, does somebody want to help support the giving money for our colored syringe? Is it a blame game or is it an infectious disease issue? Go look at the data. I've asked them for the data from 911 because there's a call log. So go ask them for the syringe call pickups. We provide Kevlar gloves, we provide Narcan. We do that for the City Police and Sheriff's Department, so their needle stick gloves, needle, I'm willing to put a receptacle out wherever you let us be. We're willing to buy the syringe, we pay for SteriCycle. We provide syringe disposal for diabetics in this community as well, anyone injecting steroids, any of that, no questions asked. And we've still never asked for a dollar. So I guess there is syringes out there that's color-coded, I don't know. But when the numbers are wore off and the colors are worn off, you can't see it anyway. So, I mean, you were an EMT, I think, Dell. I don't know about colored syringes. I know what I pay for right now is enough. And so it's, it's, you know, maybe there is, maybe somebody can clue me in. If that's what it's willing, if that's what we have to do, then I'll look into it. But again, it's about the infectious disease rate. It's not about, well, look at the opioid rate. We are under an opioid emergency by the State Department of Health data. We still prescribe opiates in this county at a three times higher rate than any other county in the state per capita. There's a problem. We make our heroin users by prescribing. So it was never just an illicit substance use. It was the over-prescribing that got us to begin with in this situation. And every county in the, in the United States has a syringe problem. Fentanyl and meth is injected. It's not, we don't have prescription drugs, and if they are, they're likely pressed as, as readily available as they were back in 2015. Yeah. So that was counterdicting a bit, but every county has a syringe problem, not just Fayette County. Every county has a substance use problem. What we got is we got a problem where the issues aren't being addressed. And we cannot grow flowers without looking at the weeds. We don't have a shelter. There's a person sleeping over there right now where the stage is, a person that's unsheltered. And when we're done here today, I'm going to go talk to this girl. You saw it. I mean, so you got a stage, but you got a person sleeping there. And she's got a shelter, so I'm really thankful for the stage. But until we address all the problems and the health disparities that we have in this community, the cycles of trauma, the untreated problems, the poverty rate, all of that, we're never going to be Times Square. That's all.
Okay, Charmin, now is, I wasn't the commissioner when the needle exchange was first put in place, but I remember when all that happened and how it happened. And it was my understanding at the time that the whole thing happened as a result of the escalating numbers of HIV and Hep C cases in the county. Now, Dr. White's letter talks about an entirely different issue. So is, is this a valid declaration?
It is not. It is not. It was, it is about the infectious disease rate. So in order to become an SSP in Indiana, you had, the county health officer had to declare a county of emergency for infectious disease. And at that time, as we know, the Scott County problem was the 200 and some cases of HIV that all started from one family, one household, and then it continued. So it was never about the opiates. And then I did respond to Missy's letter, because she sent that from Dr. White with the signature. It was never about opiates. It was about infectious disease. And that still remains today. Oh, and then let me add this. So when we left the Health Department...
I mean, it wasn't, you're, you're looking at worrying there, but it's still the same thing. Dr. White did do a public health emergency and he didn't renew the public health emergency. So it's just, we're talking about the same thing. So, I mean, calling it an opioid emergency or a...
Viral infection?
A viral infection emergency, it's still a public health emergency, which he declared at the time and, and he had it nominated. So, so, I mean, there's no reason to hang up on the work.
Well, I think it's two different things. Um, and then let me add this. So, and then, and then I will shut up because it is two different things. It was never an opioid emergency and that comes from an informed decision about infectious disease. When we left the Health Department, testing stopped. Aspire came down and done testing for a long time and then testing stopped for a long, long time. So what you will see is that when we got our CLIA waiver, testing increased in this community. Alvin, Missy, and the other lady nurse down at the Health Department came down to the cafe last year and they asked me how I was doing the testing. So there used to be an infectious disease doctor in Wayne County. He was a liver specialist and whatever, and he left. So when that happened, Sharon was having to take girls and whoever to Indianapolis for, to get treatment for Hep C. Then the laws changed, now all providers can treat Hep C. Well, I worked with Jessica Meridian and she got her person trained and certified to be able to treat HIV. But that's one provider in our community. That's one referral. Not everyone wants to go to Meridian. And if we don't give people choice, then they've had bad experiences with other mental health providers or whatever, then they don't go because if you've been labeled, if you've been stigmatized, whatever, or they feel judged. So we need more. We started, we got a CLIA waiver, I figured it all out, we got it paid for, we've had our second renewal for our CLIA waiver. All of my staff are trained and able to test for HIV and Hep C through the State Department of Health. So we've done that. Like, we've failed, we've followed all of these requirements so that we can provide more services, again, without any expense to Fayette County or Connersville, Indiana.
What can we do, what can the commissioners do in this situation, if anything?
I mean, you're the boss.
You make that sound simple.
Uh, listen, again, it costs me less money, less stress, so it's a service we provide because it's the right thing to do. It's not, it's not a ethical issue with who's right, who's wrong. It's about doing the right thing for the people in our community that are not getting the services, that don't have transportation, that are not connected to care. It's not a job, it's our lives. It's our work because someone helped us and that's what we get to do. There's no, nothing to it other than make an informed decision with the data that you have. And it's not my data, it's theirs, it's what's been presented. Look at it, compare it, look at the Health Department, look at the services that, we're not asking for money. We're asking you to let us provide a service that doesn't cost nothing. That's all.
Now, is it, is it a fair assumption to assume that the, the needle exchange itself is just one facet of, of the entire program that you provide, the cafe? And without the needle exchange, there's, would it be, I don't want to put any words in your mouth, but...
Without, you guys, without the continued support, I'm going to go to a community that's going to support us because I'm tired. How about that? That's really where I feel. I feel like I have fought for my employees' wages, I've fought for the people in our community, we're in the jail, we're doing the work. It's a whole continuum of care. It's not one service. And I don't want to be where we're not welcomed anymore. That's the way I feel.
I think what I'm trying to get to there is, is that has the needle exchange brought people, introduced people to your program and afforded them help in other ways that otherwise would have never been there?
Look at the, look at my staff and then, like, um...
I'm simply asking a yes or a no question.
Yes. Like, they're, they're working, they're, they're working and they've got, like, many of them have come from the jail, drug court, programs. Yeah, there are setbacks, that's normal. I mean, people who are on diets have setbacks too. But yes, they all, like, we just continue to be able to grow life-saving, life-saving resources.
Okay.
We, we are more than just, the harm reduction program is just a small office. That's it. It's just a small office in our, in our building, if you've never been there. Like, we have, we have more, we have, we provide, we don't put our numbers on Facebook like, oh, how many meals we've served, how many people we've connected to treatment, how many people they got colostomy bags for, how many people that are sleeping down by the river. We don't put all that out there. Like, it's every service and the people providing those supportive services.
And while the numbers might be, while, while it's just a small part of the programming overall, it brings folks in that may otherwise not come in and not receive services, including getting tested for infectious disease like we, like we talked about. And what we really just don't want to see, a Scott County outbreak here. We've worked really hard to try and work on prevention, to try and link folks to care, get folks tested, link folks to care. And it feels, the direction that we're going, if we do shut that service down, it feels like we're undoing a lot of that. We're really proud that the rates have, that things have improved, that things are getting better. And, and it's hard to know what will happen without, but a lot of folks will go unserved.
I know that, like, I'm a little protective. When I started in the harm reduction program, at first I was just like an abstinence person and then I didn't, and then I got, I connected a person to treatment. I thought I was doing something great down in the basement. Craig Hamilton came to me a week later and he said, "I got something to tell you." He died. So the first person I connected to treatment down there, he died. And then I knew, like, there had to be more, there had to be so much more. So it's not about providing a syringe, it's about, like, providing sometimes a snack, sometimes a ride to Walmart, sometimes it's a, a ride to treatment. It's about more than just the program itself. It's easy to see a syringe, but it's about the person. And I know I get a little, like, ah, but, um, these are our people and, and, and we just want to, we just want to provide services to them. That's all. So I'm sorry for, like, yeah, I get a little defensive about it, but, um, man, we've worked hard and we fought hard and, and it's just tiring. Gary Naylor said, when you guys gave us the final decision, actually, I don't, were you there? You were on the commissioners. He said if it saves one person's life, it was worth it. He talked to, oh, the old sheriff, uh, when he made his announcement that day and he said, um, "All right, this is, uh, this is really hard for me, but if it saves one person's life, then, then the vote was worth it." And it's not just saved one person's life. And again, we got the data to prove it. It's saved many people's lives. So if you don't, if, if there's not a, if we don't get a continuum, it's fine. But, but also we will see an increase in overdose deaths because who else is providing the services like we do? That's all.
Isn't your hand kind of tied until Dr. White changes it?
He's the longest standing health officer in the state. So yeah, I guess so. But we also remain in '91 and '92. So there's that data too.
For health disparities.
For negative health disparities. When are we going to get better? If we don't make different decisions, then we don't get to be better. Thank you.
Allison, you touched on a, on a point there that I was trying to get to.
Sure.
It, it seems that there is at least a certain segment of the community is more likely to ask the Connection Cafe for help or seek treatment or various other things there than they would the hospital or a doctor's office or the Health Department.
Absolutely.
Is it a safe assumption that that is because of, because of the programs you provide, these people are more in their comfort zones?
Absolutely.
Okay? That, that makes sense.
Yep.
So what would they do, without that, what would they do?
Right, that's a great question. I think, I think you're exactly hitting on it. I think that they're comfortable because of how Charmin directs the Connection Cafe and, and the, the staff and everyone, the biggest component is building rapport and trust with those that they get to serve. And so you're exactly right that there's a segment of the community that staff at the Connection Cafe see that otherwise go without services. There are folks that, I think, you know, your guess is as good as mine in terms of what they would do. We can ask folks maybe who've been in situations similar, but they probably wouldn't be seeking out. They wouldn't be getting services. They wouldn't, and you know, it's, part of, part of that is our street outreach program going to them. We know, we just applied, we have a grant under review right now that's a street medicine grant to actually bring medical care to folks that are unhoused and potentially HIV-positive. These are national models that have been showing effectiveness and it's the direction that the field has been going for years now. So yeah, it, it would, it would be a huge loss. And kind of in asking what the commissioners can do, I think it is one thing that Dr. White kind of rescinded the emergency. However, I think just having the support of the commissioners could still go a long way with the state. So I think if there, if, if there was intention to renew, that would still be good to know because that is something we can bring to our folks at the state and see if there's something that could be worked out because this is a moment of renewal, not a moment of establishment of a new syringe service program. And it's the establishment of a new syringe program that in writing requires the state of emergency from the health official. It's not stipulated in the writing that the renewal needs that. And so that was kind of a point that the state was trying to figure out. And so I think having support from the commissioners to say, this is something that since you opened and operated from the beginning, we have supported every two years. I think is this our, this would have been our third time or our fourth time?
2019.
2019 was the first with Gary Naylor and, and we kind of documented how we would proceed and collaborations. And we've tried very hard to follow kind of scientific approaches and methods that are evidence-based as well as culturally appropriate for rural Connersville and then the broader community because the cafe also serves as a hub for 12 other counties in the region, 13 other counties in the region. So we're looked at nationally and at the state level as kind of a gold star program. So that's my take is that having kind of that support when you kind of ask what could we do, I think that's still something that could potentially have some meaning.
Good.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jordan, Jordan Abashan. I have been working at the Connection Cafe for about two years now. So right now I'm the street outreach coordinator, but I ran the exchange for about a year and a half. And I just wanted to give you one instance of something that happened while I was down there. I had one kid come in, I said kid, he was in his early twenties, to get syringes and Narcan. And when I asked about how much Narcan he wanted, he asked for, I think, 12 doses. And that's pretty high, usually they ask for two or three. And I asked him if, we always ask, have you experienced or have, have you reversed any overdoses in the last, since the last time I've seen you? in the last, since the last time I've seen you? He said, "Yeah, four in one night." And they lost one. And so, I proceeded to ask him how he administered it. And he told me that, uh, that, that they, that he put it up their nose, as you're supposed to, but, um, they did no, um, measures to keep, uh, air going into, to the brain. So, he didn't do rescue breathing or CPR. Well, um, so I, I proceeded to teach this young man that if he ever experienced another overdose, that you have to make sure that the person is breathing. About a week and a half, maybe two weeks later, I got a thank you message on Facebook where a guy had been unconscious for over seven minutes. Uh, seven minutes without oxygen, you're pretty well dead. And they were, they, uh, knew to give him air. So, I mean, they said, she, as she said, if it saved one life, I know, I know for a fact that that kid wouldn't be, he would at least be brain dead had, had I not just told him something just that simple. And he would've never learned that. You don't learn that from a Narcan box. You learn that from a person. So, he comes to get the syringes and, and Narcan. And I get to tell, get to inform him on how to save this person's life that's walking around in the streets right now. Because, and they're sober, actually. The person's life that they saved, they're sober now. Also, Dispatch has my personal number. Um, I am the go-to person to pick up syringes anytime instead of, when, if a citizen finds a syringe. Instead of our county officers having to go get them, they call me. And I, I got a two-year-old son. I drop whatever I'm doing at the time, I go pick up the syringes. If we don't have the syringe exchange, they can, they can lose my number. Simple as that. If you got any questions for me, I'll gladly answer them.
I got a question from Jordan.
I'd like to point out that we, uh, that last week, we actually got two people through the syringe service program to go into treatment. They sat there to come in for the program. And I spoke with one of them about how often they thought about treatment and how they thought they would be ready and what we could do to help them. And before she left, she left with a ride to treatment. And that's too, I mean, that's just, but if you weren't there doing that, she wouldn't have been here. She wouldn't have given it.
Every, every single person that comes through and gets syringes, every time they come, they are asked if their will, what their willingness is to go to treatment. And sometimes you dread to see a change of changes from no willingness to maybe next week.
I've been thinking about it.
And then, one day, it comes to you, then they go. It simply won't happen.
Kinda sounds like that, uh, there's, there's more than one door to treatment and, and sobriety. And the needle exchange is only one of those doors.
It's a pathway.
I don't know how many people, I've been with the cafe since we started. And, um, I wish now I had kept numbers, like, my own personal numbers. I'm sitting here thinking, gosh, I wish I knew how many people I had, uh, helped with an overdose or called for treatment or, or things like that. And I'd probably be keen to keep them from now on. But, um, there are probably six or seven people, just off the top of my head, that are in long-term sustained recovery, that were participants at the needle exchange. When I was, uh, I, I work at the jail now, but I started out with Charmin at the beginning of the needle exchange. And I worked in the needle exchange for a couple of years. And, um, yeah, I would say we've got at least six, I, I almost wanna say names, but I know better. So, but we do, at least six or seven, um, long-term, you know, sustained recovery that are experiencing life after the needle exchange.
Anybody else got anything they wanna say about this?
Karen? I've talked about it before, but I'm not, as a law enforcement officer, I'm not a huge fan of the needle exchange program. You're giving people needles that we technically can arrest. So, I've never been a huge fan of that, but the services that they provide are amazing. I mean, our jail population went from, at the peak, a hundred and eighty-six, to ninety today. And when they started, it was about a one forty, one fifty, and we're at ninety inmates. Now, that's not all because of them, but a big part of that is because of them. Again, I don't, I don't like the needle exchange. You guys got a tough decision. But if the needle exchange is gone, please don't give up. I know you said, "I'm tired of fighting," but that's what you're here for. If you give up, lives are gonna be lost. And if the, the needle exchange is just a part of that, it's not popular. It's popular among you guys. It's not popular among us. But if you, you give up on everybody in that jail, lives are gonna be lost. And just because you may not get this, you can't give up. All right? It's all I'll say.
Um, I had a lady that, um, texted me on Sunday. She, um, actually is one of the people that is on our reentry from the jail. Because, of course, you know, people have setbacks. We gave her a bunch of Narcan. Um, we gave her clean stuff to use, so she's not sharing needles with somebody else that might be one of the infected people in Fayette County. Like, it is just a small piece, but it's such a huge piece.
She reported yesterday that there was three overdoses in the house that she was at just since she's been released over the weekend. And, um, so you see the Xylazine and you see the Fentanyl. Uh, and then there's so much more, like, we got the ingredients that have been tested in our syringes. It's just the opportunity to be there to save a life, to save an arm. Um, I know you guys don't see that. I got pictures of wounds of people that they've met on the street outreach. Uh, so, the wound care, you know, when you go, Dale, you've probably seen when their arms are just half eaten off, rotten, the flesh. So, it's an opportunity to provide sterile water to clean it, to triple antibiotic. Just, just a safe, and just a safe wound jacket sometimes. Because they're afraid to go to the doctor. They're afraid to go to the emergency room. Because, you know, uh, like, we're labeled. Uh, once your chart's labeled as a drug user, then you're labeled forever. Or whatever, alcoholic, or, uh, you know, it's there. And, um, so, it's, it's not just a service. It's not just a service.
Yeah, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I think it's just human, it's human nature not to go places where you know you're not welcome. And right or wrong, some of your clientele carries a stigma that causes some people just not like them or not want them around.
All of us here are, are individuals that, I think most of us were, are drug users, maybe not all, except Allison. But, but we're all in recovery and, uh, and it was because somebody took the time to let us know that we mattered. I mean, I'm eleven years and I've never had to go back and stick another needle in my arm. Now, I'm crazy and, like, there are a lot of things going on in my head and I'm, like, stressed out, but I've never had to go use a illicit substance in eleven years. And that's because some of you in this room supported me well. Tracy, you wanted to. You guys gave me opportunity. Your heart a felon. Like, I mean, it was a grant. But, um, I mean, it was just opportunity. And if they don't have breath in their body, they don't get the opportunity.
Right.
And I know I'm preaching now, like, so, just want to thank you guys and, um...
Well, I'm, I'm sure, uh, there, there's times when you feel picked on. And I hope I've never made any of you feel that way. But it is interesting. This, the service that you provide, I know is vital for a lot of people. Sometimes I really have a hard time coming to grips with why it's so unpopular with some people. But there's, there's so many different types of addictions. Let's take alcoholism, for instance. The AA organization, Alcoholics Anonymous, has been around since prohibition. And I never hear anybody talk about running the AA out of town or protesting their meetings and gatherings. I've never heard of anything like that. Our own health department operates a tobacco succession program. We all know smoking and chewing tobacco is a bad habit, you know? And they're offering that service. I've never heard anyone say anything bad about it. That's just another addiction. And there's a whole host of other addictions that, that I could go through the list and name them all that have sources of treatment. And I've never heard of anyone go after them the way that some people like to go after drug treatment, you know? So, if you really get to thinking about this, I really don't think the opiate, the opioid problem hasn't been around as long as the alcohol problem. So, it's gotten to be so old, nobody pays any much attention to it, you know? So, you're still relatively new on the list of addictions. Uh, I think as time goes on, things will get easier and more acceptable for you. But, in the meantime, I'll ask, and not to put our county attorney on the spot, but I'll, I'll ask this question. I've got a copy here of the, uh, Indiana statute on, on these declarations and that sort of thing. Am I reading right that there is a way that the county executive body could petition the state health commissioner for a declaration without the county health officer having to be involved?
I, a couple of things, issues, a couple of things I have. One, it doesn't tell us renewal. I would agree with the lady from Indiana. But it doesn't tell us a process for renewal. It just tells us that, that the process essentially to have one. So, my assumption is that means, and this is, again, these will be very fun topics to put against in court, okay? I would, I would take that as, we have to go through the same process to renew as you did to, to, to begin the program. But it's not in there. Typically, it would be in there. Okay? It's not. Two, I know what you're talking about towards the end of the, that code section to where it talks about that, correct? I have a problem with the first two sentences that essentially say, "These things must happen." And then, number one, it says that local health officer shall or must do this before anything else happens. So, while I think, to be completely honest, I think this is an awkwardly drafted ordinance, or, um, I guess, section of code, I would, I would disagree with that in court. If I were the judge making the final decision, I believe that it has to go, start with a local health officer, um, and, and then go to step two, which is then you guys have a public hearing, make decisions. And I take the section you're talking about as the ability to allow commissioners not to have to make the decision, give it to the state, allow the state to make the decision. That's what I take that section to mean. I'm not saying I'm correct. I'm not saying the judge would agree. I'm saying that I think if you took a hundred judges, we might get different opinions. This isn't a, this is not an ordinance to me that is extremely clear on its face. But I, my interpretation of it, if you're asking for my interpretation, is that boom, 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 that, that one, step one has to be, the public health officer has to declare a state of emergency. And I would agree, there's some, there's a big difference between a, a state of emergency over an opioid emergency versus a infectious disease emergency. So, I, I don't know how you wanna go. One, I think we have to have a public hearing anyway. I don't know if this was advertised as a public hearing, Jane. I don't think it was. So, I don't think you can make a decision today anyway. So, step one would be to clarify with Dr. White. I, um, you know, I don't, you could clarify with him and he could provide a clarifying letter. And then you can proceed. I can tell you that, um, I could defend you going the other way. It's not like you're clearly going against the law. I think, I think you'd probably lose if somebody challenged it. It's just my gut. I think that it's a strong argument that the first thing that has to happen is you have to have a local public health officer on board and declare that. But the language at the end is awkward, the language at the end. And, and sometimes, as I've been looking at this thing, it makes me, um, it, it, it makes it a silly result that, that the reason all that language is there is just so you guys don't have to make a decision. But then I think about politics. I think about, there are a lot of, there are a lot of communities where they might want this in there, but they don't wanna stay in the front page of the paper. Hey, I, I'm, I'm signing up for this bad boy, right? So, it sounds like it's, it, it, the, the way I interpret the statute is that that is essentially a clause to allow you to pass the buck.
I think that sums it up pretty well.
Okay. You see what I'm saying?
Sure.
Um, but I think you can't even get there until there's been that local public emergency. But then it's, but then it's, it's awkward, because at the end, it allows the state health officer to make that declaration. It's messy, um, but if you wanted my safest interpretation, my most clean interpretation, the one I would rely on, it would be that first we had to start with Dr. White. And I, I strongly feel like you can't make a decision today anyway, because there's not been a public hearing.
Right. Yeah.
I would just like to add also that before decisions are made, we should definitely meet with Dr. White to get his opinion, his side, his viewpoints on everything. So, so before you guys even have to do anything, I would definitely like to have you meet with Dr. White. And he can share, uh, the decision process and why this has been being done at this time. So...
Well, sure. I think that would be very appropriate.
Yeah. Also, one thing, though, that I would like to add is, is a lot of stuff Charmin did say here, I'm gonna use against her, her own words. She kept talking about the data and saying it's not my data. It was safe part and health data. We need data from Charmin. We need data showing what she's doing here, how many people she has, and, and more information tracking what's going on here at this clinic. We are not getting that data. So, so that's, I don't know if that's a breakdown of communication or a breakdown of what, that we've requested data. We're not getting it, we're not getting local data. So, we need some of that stuff.
I've never received a request. And then Dr. White, like I said, was at our building every, every month until, uh, October.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm more than willing, and I'm more than willing to share the dashboard to show you. So, if we need...
I mean, and I, I know he's asked for you coming to the health board meeting. So, so, showing up to the health board meetings, bringing data, bringing more stuff like that. So, there's all kinds of steps, um, to, uh, to validate your, your request or your cause. But we don't have it at this time. So...
You two got any ideas over there?
I need to meet with Dr. White and then start from there.
Okay. Tracy, do you want to initiate a discussion with Dr. White on this? See where we should go from here?
Yeah, I think we could get clarification from Dr. White. And I'd like to say thank you to everyone that came and shared your heart in what you do. And I would reiterate a lot of what the sheriff also said, that I believe y'all have made a huge difference. And no matter what, I wouldn't let one thing that you don't have, what did you do before you had the one thing? You know what I mean? Like, that's just my heart for the community is to not give up. Things come and go, but people can still help, you know? No matter what happens in this, is what I'm saying, don't give up. So, I appreciate that, that all has happened and what you've done and the lives that have been saved, especially like Jordan, what you're doing and even having your number in there at Dispatch to call.
to call. That's very, that's a sacrifice that is very much appreciated. But yes, I would say that we could speak with Dr. White and get clarification, but based on what we know, we can't do anything.
Right, yeah.
I thought the statute in there too, so.
Well, anyhow, I think we're committed to continuing this discussion with the county health officer and perhaps cleaning up or clearing up some of the ambiguity in the law on this matter. And we, I think we still have some things to learn. In the process, I think it's safe to assume that Charmin, you should be hearing from us about this in the not-too-distant future. And let it be known that I know, I'm sure there's some, some people in the community that really doesn't feel like your clientele is worth saving. Well, I want you all to know that I don't feel that way. Everybody deserves a second chance or a third one or a fourth one. Everybody is worth saving. So I'm not fighting against you people, you know? I want to make life as easy for you as possible. I know you've been a great helper to jail. You deserve much more credit than you're getting. So we'll just leave it at that for today, if that's okay to everybody?
Excellent.
And we'll pick this up again soon.
Thank you, miss.
All right. Happy to, thank you all for coming in. Is there any other patient concerns in the room today? If not, that concludes our agenda for today. All that's left is claims and payroll. Okay? The motion, Dale second, Tracy, to approve claims and payroll, all in favor? I agree, I say. That concludes our agenda for today unless we're forgetting something. Motion, Dale second, Tracy, to adjourn, all in favor, same public saying aye. We're adjourned, thank you all very much.